Welcome, everyone, tonight to our Bountiful City Council meeting on Tuesday, June 11th, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Claudia Lindenberg.
Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Claudia, and we are grateful to have Pastor Jim here with us tonight from the First Baptist Church of Bountiful, and he'll be offering our invocation.
Thank you, Mayor, for inviting me to this, and city council members. I appreciate the opportunity. And the mayor asked me to do this. A scripture came to mind, and that was from Proverbs. "Long life is in her right hand, and in her left hand is riches of honor." Everything is established from God. Submitting to government officials is an honor, because you are honoring God when you do so. So since everything is honored by God and established by God, then it is fitting that you open your meeting honoring God and welcome Him into your meeting for guidance and wisdom. Gracious Lord God, we are grateful for this evening, Lord. Grateful for the opportunity you have given us, for these government officials you have put in place, Lord. I pray, Lord, as they listen to the comments from residents and businesses and such, that you are with them, that you are giving them wisdom, that you are giving them guidance, and that they would seek you above everything else, Lord. So I pray, Lord, that your presence is great in these proceedings tonight. I pray, Lord, that your wisdom would guide all things, said, heard, and done. So, Father, we lift up this meeting to you, put it into your hands, in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ, amen. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much for that prayer and for all that you do in our community. We appreciate you, Pastor Jim. Well, I hope that your leg heals quickly. Thank you. We now have our public comment. Oh, first, before we go to that, I just want to excuse Councilman Murray tonight, who is not with us, he's with his family, and we'd like to thank Councilman Higginson for joining us remotely, that is, that he is here on Zoom with us. We'd like to now open the public comment period. We have, you'll have two minutes. Please state your name and address, and then we'd love to hear what you have to say.
My name is Melanie Berthold. I live at 1501 Maple Hills Drive. I represent the community of Maple Hills. My neighbors and I have recently found it necessary to organize and group together because of the ongoing disruptive and incomplete installation of Utopia Fiber Cables, the unrepaired damage to our properties, the evasion of responsibility for the repairs, and the lack of respect and cooperative effort with our community members to restore and make our properties whole again. Neighbors joined a chat group with their concerns and met with Reed Bangeter, the Public Works Inspector, and Clayton Savage of Utopia/B Jackson Construction to discuss the unresponsiveness of the smaller company that was installing the fiber, the damage to our sidewalks, our landscape, our foliage, our sprinklers, and the unsafe disruption of three-plus months, when we were told three days. The installation of Utopia Fiber has, for many, been anything but neighborly to the Maple Hills community. At the meeting on Monday morning, neighbors present were respectfully heard, and resolutions to damage were agreed upon, along with reasonable timelines. Mr. Bangeter and Mr. Savage were respectful and helpful and provided information. They created reasonable expectations and took accountability and steps to build trust and cooperation between citizens and city government. As our council, we, the Maple Hills community, are here to ask the following of you. One, ensure that those responsible repair the damage and restore our properties at once. May I finish the last two points? In sure, excuse me, recognize the disruption and upset to citizens' lives, the personal cost. And three, evaluate the entirety of the project. When you're looking at future projects, evaluate the true cost of progress in our community. There's a saying, and that is that the true cost of anything is the exact amount of time that we, in our life, that we expend, and that is the true cost. Thank you all for your service to our community, and I, we all appreciate it. And thank you to, also to Lloyd. I met with Lloyd, and he was helpful.
Thank you.
Hello, City Council, my name is Peggy Vazoz. I live at 1511 Maple Hills.
If you want to just put the microphone to your mouth.
Oh, I'm not that short, am I?
Thank you.
Now do you hear me?
Yes.
Anyway, as a member of the Maple Hills community, I want to speak to you about the open and unsafe condition of the aging sidewalks, the needed repair of the street lighting, and the necessity for the no parking on the corners going around Maple Hills, which are blind. We've had several close calls there. It's been brought to this city, to you guys' attention before, but nothing's been done for several years. It's all been without action. As our elected officials and our voice within our government, we look to you guys for your influence, your vote, to see the terms of the safety of the community is done right. The Maple Hills community, my neighbors and I, seek the following from you, our council members: An avenue to be put on the city's 10-year schedule of repairs, which Maple Hill is currently not on anything in the next 10 years. An avenue to impact the availability of city funds for the maintenance of our walkways and streets. Repair of two streetlights in our neighborhood, one on Gran Oak Circle and one on Maple Hills Drive itself. We have been to the lighting department several times, and it has not been repaired as yet. And if we could get designated paint and a no parking sign around those curves where people are parking almost daily, and it's two-way traffic, and winter will be here before you know it, it's just bad news. It blocks everything. Thank you for your time and interest.
Thank you. We will look into those issues and talk to our staff about these issues that you brought to us. Thanks. Any other person that is here for public comment tonight?
Just briefly, I'm Claudia Lindenberg, 2057 Pembroke Lane. I took my grandchildren up to that park. It's on Mill Street. What's the name of that? Anyway, you know, they used to have that water feature going in for the last few years. There's no water feature, and I don't understand why we build that and then we don't put any water in it.
Just want to make sure I understand what park you're talking about. The Creekside?
It's the pump at Creekside, the hand pump.
The hand pump.
Yeah. We just have water quality issues that we have to address, and it's a challenge. We have infiltration of secondary water into the culinary water, and so it's been a challenge. And Brock, I know, is, if he had, if he, well, if it was me, I would have pulled my hair out by now. But, yeah, we also want to, we also want to get the water back, because that's a really fun feature.
Thank you for, thank you for bringing it to our attention, and it's something that we'll talk to our staff about. Thank you. Anyone else here for public comment tonight? Thank you very much for those comments. We now will consider approval of minutes of previous meetings held April 25th and May 14th and 28th, 2024.
Mayor, I'm happy to make a motion to approve the minutes for April 25th, May 14th, and May 28th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes. Thank you. And now we will have our council reports. We'll start with you, Councilman Higginson.
Nothing this evening, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Price-Hewish?
Nothing to report tonight, Mayor.
Okay, I will just do a quick report that there's a new business at the square on 2600 that is called Bricks and Minifigs, and it's Legos, and they do birthday parties, classes. They have Legos for sale, and they also do trade-ins. So if you have old Lego sets at your house that you want to trade in. But I'm grateful that these businesses come and come to Bountiful, and I wish them the best. So they had a grand opening this week. Just wanted to let people know about that. Councilman Bell?
Just a minor comment. The Bountiful History Museum is working with downtown businesses to provide a QR code on those businesses where they can provide a little history of that building and what businesses have been there previously. It's kind of a fun thing. I don't expect it to be in coming weeks, but maybe coming months, and it'll be fun. And did you see those pop up? Take out your phone, scan the QR code, and you'll learn a little bit more history of Bountiful.
That's great, thank you. Councilwoman Bradshaw?
Just wanted to provide a quick update that we are still anticipating the governor calling a special session for next Wednesday on Legislative Interim Day. The main reason for calling the special session would be to address SB 161, which is the bill that dealt with the IPA Power Plan, of which we are a part owner along with 22 other cities. We don't yet have a draft copy of the bill, but have made progress in some of the concerning elements. Depending on when the governor releases the call and provides a draft of the bill, IPA may organize a briefing for cities that would take place on Friday. We're a little bit of the mercy of the schedule of the governor and the legislature on when they release things, but just wanted to put it on your radar that there will be an opportunity to be briefed on what we expect changes to be.
Thank you, and thank you for your efforts on that. Thank you very much. Okay, we have a Bountiful City Youth Council report. We have our advisor, John Cook, who is here to give us a report. Thank you, John.
All right, my name is John Cook. As the mayor said, I'm one of the advisors. All of our youth were busy tonight, so unfortunately you get me. So for the Bountiful City Youth, we just wrapped up our 2023-2024 year, and we had our 2025, our 2024-2025 term swearing-in on May 21st. It was a really good turnout. We have 54 youth members this year across eight high schools. 7% ninth graders, 10th and 11th make up 70% of our group, and then 23% are 12th graders. So it's an awesome, awesome mix-up. Couple of activities and things we have going on. June 4th was our first meeting. We had a planning meeting that we were able to kick off. The youth actually had a kickball game earlier today, which was a lot of fun. We met with North Salt Lake and Woods Cross Youth Councils and had a fun game. We have some volunteer opportunities coming up. Coats for Kids, this Saturday, we have 15 volunteers for that, which is awesome. Chalk Art, June 26th through 29th. We're participating in the Handcart Parade on July 20th. We'll carry a really large flag with Woods Cross Youth Council. And then we also have plans to set up a scheduling activity with the youth to help plan out the rest of the year moving into 2025. Any questions for me?
So, I have a question.
Yeah, please.
Are you going to be repeating the stomp on Maine?
Yeah, our plan is to do that towards the beginning of the school year, so before the school starts, but, yeah.
I thought that was a really fun activity, so I was hoping it would come back around.
I love that you said that, because in interviews, it's the number-one activity that got brought up from youth, something they wanted to do. So obviously, they really enjoyed it, too.
I want to know who won the kickball game.
You know, we didn't keep score, and then we got kicked off by a Little League's baseball team, so.
Everyone was the winner.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you so much for your work as the advisor. Thank you. We're lucky to have you. Okay, we will now consider approval of expenditures greater than $1,000, paid on May 22nd and 29th, 2024, and the April 2024 financial report.
Mayor, I'd love to make a motion that we approve those as printed.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor? Oh, sorry. That motion passes, thank you. Okay, excellent. Now we will consider approval of the proposal from Equinox Engineering. I'll turn the time over to Todd Christensen, thank you.
All right, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. This item concerns the stormwater management at the Bountiful Sanitary Landfill, and more specifically, the stormwater retention. We currently have a large retention pond at the landfill that takes the stormwater from all the active area, the landfill, and it drains to that big, large pond. And looking forward to the future, that pond is not large enough for all of the entire facility of the landfill. And more particularly, when we start to fill the southern portion of the landfill, which is at a lower elevation, we'll need a lower pond or a pump, or, you know, there are other options that we considered, but we decided that to build a secondary pond was just the most feasible, best way to meet the stormwater management needs long-term for the landfill. And although we are at least several years away from filling that southern portion, the estimate, the current estimate is approximately 19 years out. It is, this item is being brought to you now because of some new regulations that are anticipated, that the state has done some outreach to stakeholders, and they intend to adopt some regulations that will be more stringent for any impound. They would consider a stormwater retention as an impoundment, but there are other impoundment-type, I guess, purposes out there that could be used at a solid waste management facility. Anyway, the new rules would require more extensive design, more stringent design, and long-term monitoring with observation wells around the impoundment. So that would, that would bring additional cost at the time, an ongoing cost. So, so we looked into this and have decided to bring this to you now. Also reached out to the Division of Waste Management and Radiation Control as to what they would need for, to grant an approval to build a secondary pond. And we would also need approval from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, which is definitely a lengthier process and a more specialized process, which is why we approached Equinox Engineering for a proposal who, they specialize in U.S. Army Corps of Engineering, especially in wetland permitting, and have a lot of experience here in Davis County with that. They provided a proposal estimating the total cost for their part of the design as $39,930. This is the same consultant who helped us for the North Canyon Trailhead when we ran into that hurdle and our first permit with the state and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers was denied because of, they decided that it was going to need wetlands 404 permitting. So we reached out to Equinox Engineering, and they were really efficient, effective, in helping us get that permit, so. We expect it to take some time to get the permits. However, once we do, we intend to use city crews and self-perform the work. I mean, we won't be in any time restraint for getting the work done, but I think we are in time restraint for getting approval before the new rules become effective, so. And so the recommendation is that City Council accept professional services proposal from Equinox Engineering for $39,930.
Mayor, can I ask you a question? Another question, the comment on page 77. Thanks for putting that on the aerial, the diagram, because I always thought there was a misunderstood that the Bountiful Pond, where people fish and recreate, had a stronger correlation with landfill than it actually does. So I was glad to see that there's a different pond in Bountiful Pond for stormwater retention. With that, I'll make a motion.
I have a question for you, if you don't mind. Todd, I just want to understand, are you suggesting that we move up the retention basin because of the shallow aquifer rules, or is this in something else that is speeding it up?
No. Well, it's the, it's a different rule. I don't know what they're calling. I think what I heard is it was being referred to as a rule regarding impoundments at solid waste management facilities. So the rule would, what they are planning to propose in the rule is that all impoundments would need a synthetic liner, and they would all need ongoing groundwater monitoring. So upstream, downstream, groundwater monitoring of the impoundments.
Okay. So, you know, sometimes a little knowledge can be incredibly dangerous, and Matt Myers at South Davis, Seward District, had mentioned something that he was concerned about dealing with, a new proposed state rulemaking on shallow aquifers. And I was, I was curious if this was related, but it's probably something that's slightly different.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with one specifically for shallow aquifers.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm going to make a motion to approve the contract with Equinox Engineering for $39,930.
Seconded by Councilwoman Price-Hewish, and all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, that passes.
Thank you very much.
And now we'll consider for adoption the fiscal year 2024 amended budget and fiscal year 2025 final budget with related items, and we'll turn the time over to Mr. Galen Rasmussen.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Just one item up front. My apologies, but on the agenda, the items eight, A, B, and C, my presentation will cover all of them, but they'll be in the order of CBA, so sorry about that. But it will, it will come out.
So just so.
I need to get my presentation joined here.
Oh, yeah, no problem. Getting the, getting the presentation ready.
Can I ask a quick question? A follow-up to Todd's presentation while they're getting that set. Looking at pages 77 and 78, if you're, well, if you're looking at 78, the area of land that is just to the left of the shooting range, below the proposed new retention pond, do we own that? Is it wetlands? That's the wetlands portion that we need to retain as wetlands? Okay, thanks.
Just as a way of, just a way, as way of a general notification, we do have three different public hearings tonight. Excuse me. And so there will be three different opportunities. If anyone would like to speak about the budget, the final budget, about the transfer from funds from Light and Power Fund to the General Fund, and then another public hearing on compensation increases for employees, including executive municipal officers. But we'll have presentations first, and then we'll have a time for public hearings. Ready? Can you, can you hear, Richard? Can you hear?
Yes, I can, thanks.
Discussion of the budget has been something that has been taking place since January, and all of you have had a role in that along the way, including our recent tentative budget adoption in May. Now, according to state law, we need to adopt a final budget that includes everything that, to this point, we are aware of that's been requested, that you have approved in prior meetings through committee hearings and through the tentative budget process. That tentative budget's been out for public inspection since May, and it's time now to hold a series of public hearings and to just review in brief some of the highlights of the budget. So I'll just proceed through that. The budget process started, as I mentioned, in January. And through March, there is the development phase of the budget, where all the department heads meet with the city manager, myself, and with Jessica, HR Director, to review their budgets. And then we have a series of meetings that involve the department heads to review through budget assumptions and other things that are necessary to develop that budget. And in March, those budgets are reviewed and balanced with regard to revenues. And then a balanced budget is presented to the council committee budget hearings that take place in April, which you have just completed. The tentative budget was adopted May 14th, and then the tentative budget is available for that inspection period between May 14th and June 11th. And then tonight, we're at June 11th, where we will be reopening, considering for reopening, the current budget year to ask for adjustments that have come up from various reasons, whether it be unforeseen circumstances where more funds were needed or something new that came about that needed to be adopted before the budget closes. The utility transfer from the Light and Power Fund to the General Fund is another aspect of the budget that needs to be subject to a public hearing. It is an important revenue source to the General Fund. And then a new item this year, from Senate Bill 91, is a requirement to have a public hearing to consider compensation adjustments for specific municipal employees, executive employees. And this also, tonight, includes our regular employees as well, which includes merit increases and coals and things of that nature. And then finally, the tentative budget is adopted or considered for adoption by you, which would include everything from the taxes, rates, and fees, the capital improvement plan, the operating budget, and so forth. The adoption resolutions that need to be considered tonight are listed there, and we'll consider adopting a tax rate. We just today received that certified tax rate. It has not been available until now, but we will be just having a ordinance come before you tonight that includes adoption of the certified rate without naming that rate, because there was not time to produce a new document. And then we would reopen the budget, consider that, and then adoption of this new budget. This budget, as all budgets are considered in alignment with your council committee priorities, and each of those tiers are considered when we are developing a budget. And so they're all aligned with that as we go along. Key points of interest to this budget are outlined there, and I won't go through all of them, but the items of particular interest probably to the public would be that this budget contains no property tax increase. The budget includes right now $3.6 million in total revenues from property tax, which is no increase. And then we have a few fee increases that are noted there, engineering and planning, water, which is a change in the tentative budget. A recommendation came from the Water Budget Committee for a 2% rate increase. The Power Department has a 5% rate increase proposed. Gulf has a couple of adjustments there, sanitation, one adjustment, and cemetery, a variety of rates and charges that would be considered for adoption. The budget originally had a 5% cost of living and included and subject to some council discussion with staff, decision was made to include a 6% COLA. And part of that was due to receiving a lower increase in our medical insurance from what was a 15% increase down to 10 and a half percent. And then one new set of positions that were in this budget is a three-person line crew from the Power Department. Now, considering where the money comes from each year, in this particular year of fiscal year 2025, which begins July 1st, this is a graphical presentation of where the sources of funds come in primarily, which many people probably wouldn't expect, is of our resources come from user fees. Most residents would think that predominant source would be taxes, but in our case, it's mostly user fees, followed by use of reserves, because we're a pay-as-you-go city, we save aside money so we can take care of capital improvements as they come up, and only issue debt in the case of large projects where we can't save the money quickly enough, and then followed closely by taxes. Where the money goes graphically, operations and maintenance is the largest category, followed by personnel services, and then our capital expense, which changes year to year, depending on what our capital needs are. And those graphs are supported by these very number-intensive sheets, just so you can take a look at those in the public. There we go. It froze on me a little bit, now it's back up, sorry about that. Restart the presentation over again, it's frozen, I can't. Can't recover it all, get back into this.
Sorry, this technology has been giving you a tough time tonight. Thank you for your persistence. We'll just hold on for a minute here while they're working on getting the presentation back.
Okay. Does this sound still? Okay.
For our audience and for those online, we apologize for the, we just need to get our technology up and running, so.
Okay, I think this may work now, hopefully. It's not moving. It's still not moving. All right, it's not going to the. Let's see. It's not showing concurrent. That's the thing that's sharing, it don't move. Okay. I think we're back in order, Mayor, so if that's okay, we'll proceed.
Thank you so much. Thanks, everyone, for your patience. Sorry about the delay, and we will jump back in where we were on this budget discussion. Thank you.
This graphic right here explains a portion of our taxes, sales tax and gasoline taxes, and shows the percentage of each one. This slide shows a summary of our budget on the revenue side, and you can see the categories there that total up to a net revenue of $107,312. And then the expenditure side balances, and that's for each of the departments. And this is in, again, fiscal year 25. This graphic here shows how Bountiful Powers rates compare with Rocky Mountain Power rates. And depending on what the market is doing and what our costs are, we are either below or above from year to year. But this shows, just for comparison's sake, what we are right now in the new fiscal year. This is with the 5% rate increase. Now, just to go through each of the budgets quickly, the totals for each. The Power Department in the fiscal year 25 budget is $39.5 million. The Water Department is $7.3 million of the budget. Streets is $7.3 million. The Refuge, the sanitation fund, which now is three departments, recycling, landfill, and refuse collection is $5.9 million. Police Services are $10.9 million, our largest general fund department. Fire and Emergency Medical Services is $2.8 million through South Davis Metro Fire. Stormwater is $2.4 million. Cemetery Operations is $695,000. And our fiber project, due to the construction of that network, is $22.9 million. Now, part of the budget adoption includes the RAP tax and, more specifically, the RAP Tax Grant program that the city offers. Our RAP tax is divided out to 75% for projects that the city's being reimbursed for from the RAP tax that has been fronted from the Capital Projects Fund. That included Creekside Park and other improvements. And then 14% of the allocation of the RAP tax each year goes to city projects for such things as trails and parks and things of that nature. And then 11% goes to a grant program for eligible not-for-profit entities, their cultural arts, or entities that qualify under state law. And the funding requests this year, as they often do, come in at a larger dollar figure than what we have funding to adopt and grant. This year, we had six organizations asking for funding, $134,652. From our budget projections, we felt like we had $82,500 to allocate. And so each of those entities, applications were reviewed with the Parks, Recreation, and Arts Committee at large, and then subsequently by a subcommittee designated by that body. And these recommended funding figures came from that body and are presented tonight with that balancing figure for consideration within the budget. Council action tonight, for each of you to consider, is holding public hearings, three of them in total. The first one about Senate Bill 91 for compensation adjustments for specific city officers. And then there'll be an ordinance adoption for that piece, as well as an ordinance adoption for the budget overall towards the last. And then holding a public hearing on the 2025 annual transfer from the Power Fund to the General Fund. And then finally, a public hearing on the amendments to the '24 budget and adopting the '25 final budget. And then those ordinances again. Prior to going into those hearings, I wanted to go over some pieces of the budget that are required by state law and the State Auditor's Office. One of those is our administrative services reimbursement. The General Fund, some of its departments provide services to the enterprise funds for such things as providing payroll services, accounting, budgeting, information technology, legal work, and so forth. And so for those services, since the enterprise funds are to operate like a business entity, they must be able to show that they have expenses for things that keep them operating just like any outside business would. And so those allocation of that work needs to be factored into those enterprise funds to show their true cost of doing business. And so part of the job of the Finance Department is to aggregate those costs and to allocate them out to each of the enterprise funds. Here's a summation on the both sides of that ledger, if you will. The stormwater fund on down to the redevelopment agency, the total allocated is $1,828,140 in fiscal year 25, and then each of the departments in the General Fund are on the right, and how much is coming from each of those. Those costs are determined from time studies by each of the employees in those departments, giving their best faith, estimate of what time may spend each year in providing services to the enterprise funds. Now, Mayor, it's come to the time where we would need to hold a public hearing on the compensation increases that are provided within the budget. And if it's okay, I would take just a minute to go over this particular slide that will be part of the ordinance that would be considered for adoption by you tonight. This is a graphic showing just the specific municipal executive officers that are covered within the statute, but these increases apply to our general employees as well, as part of that budget presentation tonight. So this is what will be in your ordinance to be adopted and what is the subject for the public hearing tonight. So unless there's any questions on this portion of it or anything up to this point, we can open that budget to you.
Excellent, thank you. So, we will now open a public hearing for, if you would like to make comments about compensation increases for specific city officers, as outlined in the presentation. So, anyone who would like to speak to that, please feel free to come forward and give your name and address.
Claudia Lindberg, 2057 Pembun Lane.
Claudia Lindberg, twenty-fifty-seven Pembun Lane.
Yeah, that's great. Good question. Galen, do you want to take that?
Sure, go ahead. The compensation adjustments, in our case, are a cost-of-living adjustment that is six percent, and that applies to all city employees. Also, merit increases, which are based on years of service and productive capacity of the employees, and that can be upwards of five percent. And then, the combination of those two, if an employee was entitled to both, it would be eleven percent. If they're entitled to just the cost of living, it would be six percent. And as far as how it compares with other cities, we do a regular market study of how our positions compare with related entities of our size and location, and benchmark those positions with one another to make sure that we remain competitive, but not at the top, in the top third of those entities, to remain competitive in retaining and attracting employees. Does that answer your question? Yeah, it depends on the particular employee, of course, but yes. It's decided by policy, first off, that, city policy, you have the council.
So, so our HR director does a study, and who's here right now, they conduct studies across all of the departments, and so the city has upwards of two-hundred-and-fifty employees. And so, for things like the Parks Department, police, the Power Department, the Streets Department, they evaluate all of the pay, and they look at surrounding cities to determine, to make sure that we're within the range. And it's been really an issue, especially, as you can imagine, for like the Police Department, because we've had issues where maybe the police would leave because another city is offering two dollars more an hour, or, you know, there are things like that where we really want to make sure that we retain the employees that we've trained. And so, when we're looking at what is equitable, what is a standard for surrounding, in our surrounding communities, that's something, you're right, it's, we've really been paying close attention to that. So, do you have a...
Yeah, Mayor, maybe it would be helpful to our resident if we asked our city manager to talk about this new component that state law requires, how this came to be that this is now an enhanced part of our budget presentation, and then kind of our step and lane process that we have in Bountiful as well, that might help illuminate things.
Sure. Bountiful has a step and grade process where every position is classified within a certain grade. Those grades are determined based upon this market study that's been referred to. So, we do a compensation analysis for our journeyman linemen and our utility billy clerks. Every position in the city is assigned to a grade, and with each of those grades has a number of steps. And our employees, per policy, are compensated, excuse me, if they're hired at the beginning of, at the first step of that, for the first five years, they receive a five percent cost, or five percent merit increase. That is subject to, you know, acceptable performance. There's an annual performance evaluation that goes with each one of those increases. After the first five years, there's a freeze, there's no merit increases until year ten, then there's another freeze until year fifteen, another year freeze until year twenty. There are some exceptions to that with our police officers, who typically, around us, the market is, it takes them twelve years to get to the top of their pay grade, so they have a different pay grade, excuse me, they have a different number of steps to get to the top. The same thing with our journeyman linemen in the Power Department, and department heads don't have a free, or managers don't have a freeze. They just walk through the steps until they get to the top of the pay grade, excuse me. So what you can see here, for example, with these department heads and assistant department heads, is we have a number of employees who are either on a freeze, or in this case, they've all topped out. So, the only pay increases they're receiving is the cost-of-living increase. Does counsel, does that answer that piece?
Yeah, and then the legislature...
So, by state law, the city council has to approve, has to approve a budget every year, and they have to approve personnel budgets as well. There was a legislation this last year coming out of Cache County, where there was a dispute between, I think, a former elected official and a former administrator, where that former elected official became a legislator. And so, he proposed a bill that requires cities now to hold a public hearing any time a budget to be adopted includes an increase in pay for what they are essentially calling executive employees. So that's the city manager, department heads, and any deputy department heads. So any time from now on, a council, if you're going to adopt a budget that includes pay increases, there has to be a public hearing that goes with it, and we're required to show the percent change.
Question. Approximately, how many employees are in the city?
We have full-time employees about a hundred and eighty.
So, we only have seven that are getting both the cost-of-living and merit increases in the city?
Well, this is just, this is just the department heads. This isn't all the employees. So we do have a number of other employees that are somewhere in that process of, they would be receiving a merit increase as well as the COLA. But I think the other maybe relevant point, and we discussed this in prior budget years, is that for a number of years, Bountiful's COLAs have been below what other cities have been providing and below inflation. Between twenty thirteen and twenty twenty-one, inflation increased fourteen percent. Bountiful's COLAs were pretty comparable at seventeen percent, but between twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-four, inflation was seventeen percent, and our COLAs were ten percent. So, this reflects catching up with inflation this year and likely next year.
And one thing that I like to consider is, even with these, even with these cost-of-living increases, we're always still looking at the market. We're not paying our employees more than other cities are, and so we are always within the range. You know, we're comparable to what other cities are paying. Any other comments?
Question.
I just, thank you for your comment, and we will, we will move to close the public hearing, and then, what was your comment, Councilwoman?
Just referencing what Gary had mentioned, a number of people are not, have reached the top of their pay grade. On this Exhibit A, are there some people who are reaching the top of their pay grade with this particular merit increase?
Probably. It's a good question. Looking at that, I would say that there might be one, maybe two of those that are, have an eleven percent. There might be two that are topping out this year, but I'm not even certain of that without looking at where they are in each of their individual steps.
Thank you. I just wanted to address your comment. I also was like, oh, you know, when you see eleven percent, it seems like a significant number, and I feel comfortable with our policy right now, because we have, we have chosen to look at the marketing, the market studies, and bring the COLA a little bit higher this year to make sure that our city employees, which I believe are our single most valuable resource here in Bountiful, we have incredible institutional knowledge, we have dedicated employees, they're just phenomenal across the board. And the more I get to know the individuals who are working for Bountiful City, the more impressed I am all the time. And I just think, I was, it gives me less pause when I know that the merit increases are based on evaluation and performance and their contribution to making and maintaining the great city that we know is Bountiful, and they are truly our most valuable resource, and so I just wanted to follow up with that.
Thank you for that. So, now are we moving to...
We'll just move to the next public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
This one would be on the utility transfer, and so I'll just go over a few slides here and then answer any questions before the public hearing, if you'd like. This graphic here shows a comparison of the, well, it shows the transfer that's anticipated in the budget from the Power Fund to the General Fund, three million, seventy-two thousand, six fifty-one. That represents seven point eight percent of the Power Department expenses, and that was the amount that was in the tentative budget and now in the final budget. And so that just kind of shows that graphic here. And then this is a listing of all the transfers that have taken place since fiscal year two thousand to now. It was originally at fifteen percent of metered sales, but has now dropped to ten percent of metered sales over time. Just to mention a little bit about that transfer, currently, it's based on ten percent of metered sales. It funds certain things in the General Fund, like our police and fire, streets, maintenance, and snow plowing. It allows for some non-property tax-paying entities to be able to contribute to the services they receive. Some property tax, the property tax entities that don't, that ideally would pay taxes but don't are like schools, churches, some not-for-profit entities. So, this allows for some compensation for services provided through another means. This transfer keeps property taxes in Bountiful law. If this was not in place, we would have to at least double, if not more, our tax rate in order to fund the services we have now. Again, it's seven point eight percent of the total budget expenses in Light Power Fund for fiscal year twenty-five, and you might also look at it as a dividend paid back to taxpayers from investments made in Light Power Fund. So that's just kind of synopsis we'd like to bring out to the public, so they have appreciation for what benefit that is to the citizens and city overall. Mayor, unless you have any questions, we can open a public hearing.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions before we move to a public hearing? Okay. We will now open a public hearing to comment on the transfer from the Light and Power to the General Fund, if anyone would like to speak to that. Seeing none, we will bring it back to the council. We will close this public comment period, and then, now are we discussing the...
The final area that deals with the budget overall.
Thank you.
Fiscal year twenty-four that we're in, as well as the fiscal year twenty-five. Let's go over a little bit about the property tax, since we've talked a little bit about this budget not including a property tax increase. This is a graphical representation of how much each of the taxing entities makes up of the total pie. Unfortunately, we didn't have preliminary tax rates available, so we could utilize twenty-twenty-four preliminary tax rates, but I did use twenty-twenty-three tax rates to show a proportion as it would be using the average property value that's twenty-twenty-four, using twenty-twenty-three rates. And so you can see that Bountiful is seven percent of the total pie, and the biggest contributor to it is the school district. This is a cabinet representation of those property tax rates. It shows the city's tax rates for each of the cities in the county, and then it adds to that the other aspects of the tax rate, including if there's a recreation district involved, a fire district, an irrigation district, and so forth, and it has a total comparison. The table is sorted on the city tax rate only, so Syracuse has the largest tax rate, Bountiful falls in the triple zero eight four nine rate, which is near the bottom of the other cities in the county. Looking at how much a property owner would pay using a fair market value of five hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, and putting in the homeowner's exemption of forty-five percent, based on the tax rates that are available twenty-twenty-three, it shows you that that taxpayer would pay two thousand, seven ninety-nine to a combination of all the taxing districts, and of that, total Bountiful's two oh nine and thirty-one for the debt service portion. So, a relatively low percentage again. Just a few things to bring to your attention from the tentative budget that you considered in the committee hearings that you had all attended. There are a couple, a few things that have been adjusted in either the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four budget, which we're currently in through June thirty, or in the twenty-twenty-five budget that starts in July. The one significant change is a two million dollar transfer of ARPA money from the federal government that was originally in the Capital Projects Fund when it was received to the Water Fund, so that the Mill Creek Reservoir Development can proceed. That'll be an adjustment in the twenty-four budget. The transfer of two point four million internally between the RDA revolving loan fund and the RDA operating fund for purchase of land in the downtown area, again, a twenty-twenty-four budget adjustment. And then, a two percent rate increase in water, that was a recommendation from the Water Committee in the twenty-twenty-five budget. And then, three additional twenty-five budget items, some adjustments in the police budget for dispatch, renovation, and purchase of vehicles. There is a possibility that those expenditures will trail over into the new budget year, so it's proposed that those be added to the budget. And then, the cost-of-living allowance adjustment from five percent to six percent, which was in the tentative, but now in the final budget for consideration. And then, again, a reduction in the health insurance increase, which was fifteen percent, but it's now ten and a half percent. So just in summary, the total property tax between the general property tax rate and the debt service is four point one million, and the split out between the two is there. As I mentioned earlier, we did just receive the certified tax rate today, and we will be contemplating in the ordinance that you'll consider tonight, adopting the certified tax rate, and that will be slightly less than that figure, three point six million, it'll be about fifty-nine thousand less. That will be adjusted within other revenue categories within the General Fund, and so the overall budget will be balanced in consideration of that. And then, the bond levy is the amount of money that is necessary to meet the bond payments. Again, the average homeowner would pay two oh nine for general property tax and thirty-one dollars for debt service, and the last time that the tax rate was adopted was twenty eighteen. Now, Mayor, it's time for that public hearing on both the fiscal year twenty-four and twenty-five budgets. If I can take just a moment, I'll just run through quickly the budget amendments that are proposed, and I apologize, even though this is small, I usually print it out on eleven-by-seventeen paper for consideration in hard copy form, but even when you're putting it on this kind of a slide, it is small. These categories are divided out, General Fund and Capital Fund, and so there is increases in the amount of money being requested for various things here. This summary is in your ordinance as Exhibit A, so you can take a look at it in more detail that way. This is the portion that is dealing with enterprise funds and special revenue funds. There were no enterprise fund amendment requests, and so it's just special revenue funds, which are the Redevelopment Agency in this case. And then, finally, the debt service fund and internal service funds for some modest increases there. The summary for the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget, the net revenues and expenses are one hundred and seven million, eight oh seven, three twelve from both revenues and expenses, and then the fiscal year twenty-four budget amendments were, as previously outlined. So, Mayor, unless there's questions?
Thank you. We will now open a public comment. We'll open a public hearing to discuss the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four and fiscal year twenty-twenty-five budgets. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. And so now, we... Okay.
Two ordinances to be considered.
Thank you.
The first is for the adoption of the compensation changes we discussed for the municipal executive employees and others, and then the second ordinance is the one that is the combination ordinance that adopts the amendments we talked about, the fiscal year twenty-five budget, rates, fees, long-term capital plan, and related items.
Okay.
We'll probably, I would suggest, having a motion and voting on each one separately.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, any questions for Galen about any of these items? Any discussion? It's, and it seems like a lot to be voting on, but we have been discussing this for months, as we've gone through the budgeting process and all the budget meetings, so...
Mayor, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay. Okay.
And making this motion with, you know, thanks to our staff for the many hours of budget subcommittee and budget prep meetings that they've been a part of with us to craft this budget and get to a point where we could present a balanced budget to our residents for the operation of our wonderful city of Bountiful. So with that, I would...
I add to that, those subcommittee meetings, those were public meetings as well that were notified, noticed, and you're welcome to attend in the future years. They're not well-attended either, just like tonight.
Thank you.
Sorry for the interruption.
I agree. The budget is one of the most important things we do, and hopefully it means that our residents agree and trust with the direction we're hoping head the city, that the attendance is light. So my motion, Mayor, would be to approve ordinance 2024 dash oh four on compensation increases for employees.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously, thank you. And are we ready for the next motion?
I'm happy to continue the streak and make a motion to approve ordinance 2024 dash oh five, adopting the amended and final budgets.
Second?
Seconded by Councilwoman Higginson, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you so much. Okay, we will now move to consider, thank you so much for your work, Galen. We'll now move to consider adoption of resolution 2024 dash oh five, approving an interlocal cooperative agreement between Farmington City, North Salt Lake, and Bountiful City for building inspection services. Mr. Lloyd Cheney.
Thanks, Mayor. The legislature in the last session has given us the opportunity to provide a list of a minimum of three qualified inspection firms to whom building permit applicants can turn to for building inspections when we are not able to provide inspections under certain criteria, meaning within three days of the day that they call to request an inspection. Now, that doesn't happen very often. It might happen occasionally, but for Bountiful, not very often at all. Don Simons, our building officials here tonight, he and his cohorts with North Salt Lake and Farmington came up with a great, what I think is a great idea, to share the resources that we have as cities to cover inspections that, you know, may fall in that category when others can't, when we can't provide them ourselves, that, you know, we have trusted colleagues that we could trust to come do inspections for work in our city. So this interlocal agreement represents the collaborative effort of those three cities. And I'd just point out that both Farmington and North Salt Lake have approved the interlocal at this point, so we get to be the cleanup batter on this, and we would recommend your approval of that resolution. And if you have any questions, either Don or myself would be happy to...
What's the timeframe on it, the interlocal? Is it like for a period of so much time, or?
My understanding is that it would continue in however long.
Until you decide.
Until we, until one party decides to not be a part of it. But there's no end date to this agreement, as long as the law stays as it is, which is unlikely.
It can just be terminated at will if you...
Correct.
...chose.
Yeah, there's no financial impacts or anything because they've all, we've all agreed that, well, the terms of the agreement is that services would be provided without charge. So it really wouldn't come with any consequence.
Do you see any, I mean, do you see any potential, like, issues, or?
No, so this legislation was brought up because there's a few jurisdictions, mostly in areas that are hard to get to and vast in area, that certain times of the year they get out on inspection. So we're talking like a week or two or three weeks when the contractor calls for an inspection to when the jurisdiction can perform that. In the three years that I've been here as the building official, we've not been out more than three days, and that's including Friday as an inspection day. So even though we, you know, have not worked that day, we've still been within the seventy-two hour, three-day lead time for an inspection.
Is it three business days?
It's three business days, including Monday through Friday, excluding legal holidays.
Thank you. Councilwoman Higginson, I just wanted to see if you had any feedback on this.
I want to tell Don thanks for the idea. I think this is a great idea to satisfy the state. Bountiful doesn't have the problem that some municipalities do in their inspection scheduling, so just kudos to Don, and I'm happy to support this.
Any other questions from council members?
Maybe a question and a comment. I think this shows well, of how well we work with our neighboring cities, and we see that across the board with all sorts of things. A possible concern I have is, say, we get to the end of the year, maybe we look back and we've called on our neighboring city two or three times because you're able to do it all in the future, just like you have in the past. But maybe Farmington has a growth spurt, and you guys are called to go to Farmington fifty times or a hundred times or something, and it becomes a heavy, heavy load on you guys, the Bountiful staff. Will there be an opportunity, I assume there will be, an opportunity to revisit this and maybe have a little better cost sharing potentially? That's just kind of a comment or maybe a question if you have an answer to that.
Right, and at any point, any one of the three of us would be able to either remove themselves from being a part of the city. If that's, if that's an issue, and it does become an issue, then we certainly have the availability to go and renegotiate with them if that's, we did talk about settling up at the end of the year if there was more than an eight-hour difference. We just didn't think that that would, was going to be required. As a side note, Farmington is also in an interlocal agreement with a few other cities up north also, I think Syracuse and one or two more. So we're all just kind of reaching out to try and help people, and we didn't go to Woodscross or West Bountiful. They don't have staff that they have employed by the city. They, they use a contract service for their building department. So we didn't feel that was a good fit to...
Is that, is that true for Centerville as well?
Yes.
Thanks, thanks. Any other questions?
Got a quick question. We currently use WC three?
We do. We currently use WC three. We have a contract with them if we need to use them for plan review or inspections. And we've used them this last year, for the last couple of years, pretty heavily, while our employee inspector has been getting his certifications to be able to perform all the inspections. Our inspector is now fully certified, and so we're using WC three less. We, but we are looking forward to a couple of large projects. So we have a two hundred and eighty unit apartment, a six-story parking structure down at Renaissance that are coming on, you know, starting here soon. So it's possible we may be utilizing that WC three for, for that. We would use, we would use them for any overflow that we have before, we would use this interlocal agreement.
That was my question, yeah, how you anticipated using them in the line of, as you go down. So how, like in the last couple of years, just, you know, how, how often do we rely on them as a percentage? Do you, can you... Or do you anticipate with these kind of big building projects coming on?
Are you asking about the use of WC three?
WC three, yeah.
So two years ago, we relied on them heavily because we didn't have in-house resources. I mean, they essentially were the replacement for our inspector in training. That's decreased as his certification level has increased. Right now, we're, we're only using them just a few hours a month compared to almost full-time. So it's gone way down, but like Don said, we expect that it will probably tick up a little bit with these big projects.
That's great, thanks.
Mayor, could I make another comment?
Yeah, please.
Am I talking too loudly? By the way, I can't hear myself.
It's just right.
Okay. Concerning the issue that Councilmember Bell brought up, I just wanted to say that the cities in the south end of the county haven't been problems with inspection scheduling. Most of the state has not had issues with inspection scheduling. There's a couple of outliers, and I'll just say that one of the, the county that Park City is located in, without naming any names, they've been out of ways on inspections. But that fact has been used by developers as a club to beat up on cities, saying that inspection scheduling is one of the problems that's stopping the building of homes in Utah. It's a fake narrative, I don't want to use the word fake, it's a false narrative that the legislature bought into, and this is the result, the bill that requires us to have this arrangement. So I don't think this is going to be an issue for us or our neighboring cities that are participating in this interlocal. This is just to cover ourselves from the bill that has been passed on the false narrative that the legislature bought into. That's my commentary.
Thanks for your comment. Would you like to make a motion?
I'd be happy to make a motion that we adopt ordinance 2024 dash, what is it? Zero five? Resolution 2024 dash oh five, adopting the interlocal agreement as it's been presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion passes, thanks. And Mr. Cheney, you have the next one as well.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight I have for the council's consideration the approval of a contract with Silverleaf Partners for remodel of the Bountiful Police Department Dispatch. We have, we put out an RFP for CMGC, that's Construction Manager General Contractor Services, so that we would have a contractor involved during the design of the remodel of Dispatch, knowing that this is a very time-sensitive project. We needed everybody to be in step and not have any miscues for ordering materials or scheduling or anything like that so that we can meet our obligations. Interestingly enough, we received two responses. Both Zwick and Silverleaf responded to the restroom remodel project at the police station, so they were familiar with the building a little bit. Silverleaf is not necessarily new to us because they were a subcontractor for the remodel of this building. They did a lot of the steel framing, and when I say steel framing, I just mean metal studs and the drywall work here in our building. So we do have a somewhat of an established relationship with them. And as I did an analysis of the two proposals, I found it very interesting that the time is very sensitive, we're obviously sensitive to the cost, and we need this to come off quickly. If the project took more than a month, it was very clear that, based on the proposals submitted, that Zwick would be significantly more expensive. But Silverleaf was a better value for us, and I had each of them submit a schedule to give us an idea of what they thought the timeframe would be for this project. It's not especially a big or complicated project, but, you know, the time-sensitive component is the critical piece. And there's plenty of time for either schedule, but the economies of just a little more time point to a favorable outcome for Silverleaf, and they're well-qualified and have a reputable group of subcontractors to help them with the electrical needs on that project. So it's my recommendation that the council accept Silverleaf Partners' proposal for that project.
Mayor, I have to make a motion to approve Silverleaf for our least dispatch project.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Hey, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Just looking at the cost breakdown, is there a contingency on this? Or what is that, anticipated or proposed contingency?
We will have a contingency as we develop our, our budget. I would guess somewhere along the ten percent, something like that on a project like this.
Thank you. Okay, we'll turn the time over to Mr. Benson to consider approval of the purchase of a Fountain nine eight zero zero SS Aqua. I'll let you describe it. Thanks. Yes, parts washer, thank you.
Here we go, I'll get that white turned on. So our current parts washer spring a little leak, so we went to look at it, and we found that there was nothing to weld to. It had corroded beyond repair, and so we need to replace it. We looked at two, a couple of different options. We could have the cabinet that we currently have rebuilt in stainless steel, and then just take and move over the parts we have. Looking at that option, it seemed to be quite expensive plus labor on that. We looked at another washer. It was part stainless steel and part regular steel. We're still going to run into that corroding process in there. And we found another one, the Fountain nine eighty-eight SS from Northern Tool, that's all stainless steel for forty-two thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars and cents. So after reviewing all that, it's the staff's recommendation that we purchase that one from Northern Tool and replace that parts washer for forty-two thousand nine hundred ninety-nine ninety-nine.
Any questions, counsel?
No, I just have a comment, and then I'd like to make a motion. I, when I was reading this, I really appreciated this, the look at the stainless steel, like you wanted to have that level of quality on the product. And I was just thinking about a vacuum that I used to have that was all metal and how long it lasted, and just now everything is made out of plastic and it doesn't last. So it was just making me think about how you really do want to get the highest quality product, even if it's a little bit more money here in this case. And so I appreciated that. So I would like to make a motion that we approve the Aquius parts washer, the Fountain nine eight zero zero SS. Is that right?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes. Thank you so much, Charles. And now is there a motion to adjourn to the RDA meeting?
Still moved.
Second?
So we will now, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. So we will now adjourn to an RDA meeting with a separate agenda. We, I welcome everyone, and do we just, can we go straight into it? I'd like to welcome everyone to this RDA meeting, and we will consider approval of the minutes for May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four.
Move to approve those?
Okay, moved by Councilwoman Higginson and seconded by Councilwoman Bradshaw. And all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, those minutes are approved, and now we will move to a public hearing. And now we will move to a public hearing to consider adoption of the RDA Resolution 2024-01, approving the proposed fiscal year 2025 RDA budget. So we'll first, we'll first have a little overview. Is that you, Gary? Oh, sorry, Galen, thank you. Galen will give us a little overview, and then we'll go to a public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council and the board. Francisco asked me to present this on his behalf since he had another commitment tonight. This budget is part of the combined document that you've looked at from the city that includes the RDA's two funds. And that is Fund 70, what we call Fund 72, that's the revolving loan program. And Fund 73 is the operating funds of the redevelopment agency. The revolving loan program, as you know, funds loans and helps local businesses with their operations and trying to increase development in the RDA areas. And then the Fund 73 is the operations of the RDA, which includes capital improvements and as well as ongoing operations for paying of operations and maintenance expenses. And the expenditures this year, there's a total of $50,000 budgeted for special projects. That's down from $250,000 that's usually in there based on allocating those funds to capital improvements that are planned within the budget. And so it's just a reclassification that year, this coming fiscal year, I should say. The improvements in the downtown area total $1,575, and that is part again of the budget document. That's the consolidated budget document of the city, which includes the RDA. This budget is balanced with revenues and expenditures, as is the city's. And I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have any otherwise, Mayor, to open a public hearing.
Any questions from the council? Okay, we will now move to a public hearing to, to consider any comments about the RDA 2025 budget. So the public hearing is now open. Seeing none to comment, we will bring it back and close that public hearing. And now, are there, are there questions or thoughts from the council?
Mayor, I'm prepared to make a motion. We have an exciting RDA year budgeting before us. And so I'd like to move that we adopt the RDA Resolution 2024-01, approving the fiscal year '25 budget.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. That, that is, that resolution passes. And now, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Price-Hewish. And we, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thanks.